Okay. Good. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and stand for the singing of "Voe Canada."
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee, hearts, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
If we all want to remain standing, you can tell the table this evening's looks a little bit different. And we just want to take a moment, to have a moment of silence for the passing of Counselor Ken Langel. We'd also like to have a moment of silence for Vivian Murphy, who's spent every council meeting with us as well. Thank you, everyone.
I think Ken was saying that at the last meeting, he made that motion for Vivian. So I think Ken would, you know, he was never silent, so I figured I...
Oh, my dear. Well, it did. I don't know if everyone caught that, but Ken's light was on, as it often was.
On more than it was off.
Yes. So we will miss that. Okay, a record of attendance. Linda, you're good? Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? Okay. Approval of agenda additions or deletions. So we have 13A, and I think they're right in front of you. We've got a request for direction for the sign installation, 225 Main. 13B is a request for permission, fly over by the snowbirds. 13C, communities in bloom, national symposium. 13D, mental health issues. Anybody, anything else?
Yep.
Oh, hang on. You gotta... Okay, Counselor...
Thank you, your worship. Two items. I would like to make 10...
E.
E, a notice of motion.
Okay.
And I would also like to present a card on, I got from Lionel Langel tonight, to Counselor, or to Counsel, and to the Mayor's citizens in Yarmouth on a sympathy from, on the passing of Ken Langel.
Okay.
So I'll pass that to you, your worship, and that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Dennis?
I'd like to remove 10K until we get further information.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I do have one request, and it is 10L. The request from the Art Gallery, if everyone's okay to move that up just a little bit, maybe to the top of the business? Because he's here. We all right with that?
Maybe your worship put the youth truth to...
Mm-hmm.
Would maybe break the...
Yep, we'll do that.
Move the agenda with the additions or deletions.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. We'll do the approval of the minutes, and then we'll get to the two that are going, that are in the audience. Public hearing, February 18th, 2016. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Town Council, March 10th, 2016. Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, March 24th, 2016. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And Town Council Special Meeting, March 24th. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, let's do, we'll go down to 10A, Youth Truth Matters, because they're here, and then we can let them... I just gotta find it. Okay, so I put this one on. That permission be granted for the Youth Truth Matters Group to utilize Frost Park, April 30th to May 2nd, for their clothesline project that shines light on the Nova Scotia sexual violence strategy. So basically, they're funded through Health Canada and are doing a clothesline project whereby they write... They have T-shirts, so they gather them for the youth and the adults and everyone involved, and hang them on the fence to draw attention to Nova Scotia sexual violence strategy. And Hannah's here in the audience. Hannah, did you want to say anything, or did I cover it? Because you're welcome to come up.
It's also clotheslines in the trees.
Yeah.
There will be clotheslines hung up from the trees, and the T-shirts will be hung on.
Okay. So, yeah...
We're gonna ask the mayor to repeat that on the microphone, so...
So there will, there will always, because it's called the clothesline project, there will also be clotheslines from tree to tree. Okay? So I'm just looking for a motion to put... Okay. Counselor Dawes, I have a seconder.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. See, it was that simple. Thank you for coming in, and good luck. Good luck. Okay, and we're gonna go down to L. We have requests from the Art Gallery. And there's actually, Mr. Gorman left. If you're wondering what this big map is, that's from Mr. Gorman. Go ahead, CAO.
Thank you, your worship. Mr. Gorman is here, and I urge you to perhaps hear from him in terms of the project. The question for Counsel is really about the map that he has left on the table. What he's looking for, for the Friends of the Art Gallery of Nova Scotia 10th Anniversary Celebration Gala, is to utilize exclusively for a period of time for the event, that area of the Collin Street parking lot and Alma Square that is outlined in orange. And he will be going through the Town Engineer and Traffic Authority regarding the section that is in the public street on First Street.
Okay, good. Mr. Gorman, do you want it? David? Do you want to just come up, and if you want to sit here, just state your name, we'll get you on camera.
Yes, please.
Okay, the mic's on?
Yeah. Okay, so I'm here representing the Friends of the Nova Scotia Art Gallery in Yarmouth. So this event is on May 28th, but the space we're looking to have utilized, Alma Square would be exclusively for May 28th, for the period of time of about noon until after the event, which would be 10:00 PM. And that lower area of Collin Street parking lot, we would like to have that from 8:00 AM on Friday morning till noon on Sunday. We do have security which will be in place, and we'll have barriers in place. We're also taking out a parade permit with the RCMP to have the section of Alma Square from First Street, is it First Street behind Arch Davis? Up to the corner by the Vanguard Building, and then just as far as Sandy's door, so we don't impede any of her traffic for that portion of the street. And that will just be for that night, just for the event. So the auction itself, so I guess I'll tell you quickly what the project is. So we have 25 artists involved from all over the province, from youth to Aboriginal artists, to local artists, to relatively very, very well-known artists. And this is the 10th anniversary of the Art Gallery here in Yarmouth. And it's the only satellite gallery of Nova Scotia, the provincial gallery in Canada. Anyway, so the event runs from 5:30. There'll be an opening ceremony in Alma Square, and things will move inside around 6:30, with an auction of the doors at 7:45. People will move back into the gallery at 8:30, and it finishes at 9:30. It is a fundraiser, and there's a ticket for the event, which is a relatively high-priced ticket. However, to keep it open to the public, the auction portion of the event is open. Anybody can come to the auction. There'll be a very, very small fee to get into the tent for the auction. I can't confirm what that fee is just yet. Outside of that, I don't know if there's any questions?
Any questions for David? Go ahead, Counselor.
Thanks, Dave. Good project. How many artists involved?
We've got 25.
25?
Yeah.
And they're from Yarmouth area?
Bear River, Jador. As far as Jador, most are Yarmouth, some Bear River. Two gentlemen from Wolfville area. And there's, like I say, there's a good mix of names. I'd rather not reveal who all the artists are right now, because we've not publicized the event yet, and I know that this is...
What about the finished product? What's gonna be the...
Finished product? We've got 25 antique doors, and most of them have come from old homes in Yarmouth County. So some have come from Willow Street, William Street, Collin Street. There's two from Beacon Hill in Boston. There's a few doors circa 1910 from Halifax. I think the oldest door is 1867, perhaps. So they're all being repurposed and reused, and there's also gonna be a food component. There's gonna be like a farm-to-table element with food involved. There'll be five or six dishes, local chefs, as well as hopefully a celebrity chef who will bring it all together. And we're gonna utilize local ingredients and local farmers as best we can, and just highlight the region, the area, and the history and the richness of the gallery. And it's our hope as well, that when the gallery opened in Yarmouth, the Governor General was there. And it's our hope that Governor General will be there again on May 28th. So...
Okay, thank you. Deputy?
I just wanted to say congratulations and thank you, Dave. That's a wonderful and interesting event. I was trying, I was asking you, Dave, a few minutes earlier, wondering how I could fit a door onto my home, and he suggested I might make a coffee table out of it, or something like that.
Coffee table? You could also build an addition onto your home for more art.
So the date, the date, just say the date again.
May 28th.
May 28th, yeah.
May 28th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Counselor McIsaac?
Thank you, your worship. My question's to Jeff. Jeff, this would have to be referred to the Traffic Authority? To see if this, I'm sure it's doable, but it would have, the motion would have to be made to refer this to the Traffic Authority, or...
That part's already underway.
That's already underway.
It is the Alma Square and the parking lot that we need Counsel's permission on.
Then I make a motion that we accept the offer that was given by the gentleman here, Mr. Gorman. And that was presented to us this evening. I move that we accept that offer.
Okay, moved by Counselor McIsaac, seconded by Counselor Dennis, and Counselor, you're on. Thank you, your worship.
David, kudos to you and everyone involved in this project.
Thank you. We've got a good, we've got a good dedicated committee of individuals, so it's been a good group effort.
Yes, yes. I just have one quick question, and that is, the doors that are, that are being donated?
We purchased the doors from a local antiques dealer.
Okay, then I think you just answered my question. I was going to ask if all, or some of the doors, if they would be, if their origins, their homes, are they going to be...
They're all known. All the origins of all the doors are known, the date of the door, which home it was from, and even, in most cases, what, what the door is from in the house. So for example, one artist, her door is from an old Victorian home in Yarmouth. It was a bathroom door. And she's taken the theme of Victorian and bathroom, and that's what's translated to her door.
Great. All that will be identified?
All that information will come with the door.
Good. I thought so. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Anything else for David? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Hope to see you all there.
Okay, so the Idling Control Bylaw, second reading. CAO, you got that?
Thank you, your worship. So it is second reading of this bylaw. Counsel had requested be brought forward. So we had first reading at the last council meeting. We advertised for public hearing. And so at this time, it would be appropriate if any members from the public wish to speak to Counsel and be heard on this bylaw, now would be the time to come forward and address Counsel.
Okay. Would anyone like to speak to this? Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this issue? Third and final, would anyone like to speak to this? Okay, hearing no one. So what's the next step there? CAO?
So, your worship, it is on your agenda. It is regular counsel. And if anyone wished to make a motion to approve second reading, that would be appropriate. Or you could defer. You could refer to staff for more information, but those are your options.
Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. I would make the motion to approve the second reading as requested.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Method of preparation preliminary list of electors. CAO?
So, worship, I'm not sure if everyone was aware, but there is a municipal election this year in October, and...
You would never elect on the unit.
No, you wouldn't.
So as such, there are certain steps that we have to take, certain decisions that Counsel's required to make in the run-up. And the decision that we need to make is regarding the preliminary list of electors. Last time, we ran a municipal election in town. We enumerated. We went door, we paid people to go door-to-door, confirmed the names, addresses, and so on of our eligible voters, which gave us a very current elector list. We have the option of doing that again, or we have an option of using a list of electors from the most recent provincial or federal election. And we also have the option of using a list from a permanent register of electors maintained for provincial or federal elections. Those are the options. I wasn't sure how Counsel would feel about the enumeration. We did it last time, and it worked well for us. There is an expense that comes along with that, but you do end up with a, with a very current list.
We need a current list. Okay, Counselor McIsaac?
Your worship, Jeff, you're right, and I like that idea of getting a current one, go door-to-door, more accurate. You know where, because people transit, they move around, and new people net come in, and maybe if people weren't here to vote in the provincial or the federal election last year. So I would be in favor. I make a motion that we accept the new re-numeration as we did in the previous, last election, four years, four years ago, or three and a half years ago, whatever it was. I move that we do it that way.
Moved and seconded. Did you get... Okay, Counselor Mooney?
And Jeff, I was just wondering, you talked about the last two options were the provincial, last provincial election, last federal election, which was in October, November. Is there a permanent electors list? Do they keep it up-to-date, and do they use data from, like, Canada Post to keep that list updated, or is that a good question?
That is a good question. The permanent list of electors is one of the three options. And honestly, I don't have the information for you on what the difference is between the last federal election and the permanent register. Maybe the permanent register is more up-to-date?
I, yeah, and I don't think it makes any difference. I think Counselor McIsaac's motion is probably the best, the best one out of the three, because there has been a turnover, and I can just see it in my neighborhood. And to get the most accurate, up-to-date list, I think that's the way to go.
The other thing, your worship, that is, that is different this time around in the municipal election is the residency requirement. So you'll recall that it used to be that you had to be resident in the municipality in which you were voting for six months prior to the, to the polling day, regular polling day. That has changed to be one day. So you could have people literally move into town the week before the election, and they would be eligible voters. And so our staff, our people working on this election, will have to be doing a lot more updating of the electors list this year than perhaps ever before.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to go with the first one, which is the enumeration. Okay? Moved and seconded. Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Can I just ask that we go to 13A? Dustin's here. And maybe we can take care of that for you, so you can go home and watch a hockey game, even though we know you want to watch us. Okay, so 13A is a request for direction, the sign installation at 225 Main Street. Okay? So the recommendation is that Counsel approve the request to erect a freestanding sign in the public right-of-way. Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Isn't that simple? Thanks for coming. Cohabs, okay? Request for decision, pace presentation. CAO?
So, your worship, the... The PACE program is offered through Efficiency Nova Scotia. It's quite similar in structure to the SolarCity program that was run in HRM for the last several years, providing residents an opportunity to basically borrow, have the, borrow for the purpose of installing solar energy panels on their, on their homes, and pay, pay, pay the town back over 10 years. So what Efficiency Nova Scotia has done is they've created a program that is available to municipalities, where they do a great deal of the work. And we, of course, would be the lending agency. We have that ability through the Municipal Government Act. And the PACE program would be tailored to our specific needs. So it could be solar, or it could be solar and other forms of energy efficiency upgrades to people's homes. What is requested today is simply to have Efficiency Nova Scotia come forward and make a presentation to Counsel to inform you on, on the ins and outs, answer any questions you have. At this point, it sounds very good, and I would urge you to hear the presentation. Second.
Moved and seconded. What we got next? Counselor, all the lights gone out. Okay, so... Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Youth Truth Matters. Motion's from Joint Town Council Meeting, April 11th. So the first one is that the Town of Yarmouth support the Municipality of Aragile Track and Field Project, conditional upon the Municipality of Aragile receiving 50% of funding from non-municipal sources. Moved and seconded.
Worship, I'd just like you to say a few words about the project, please.
You'd like me to say a few words?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. The Municipality of Aragile, I believe it's out at Peb, is it? Yeah, Paribas, are going to put in a track and field facility, the track that will allow us to draw lots of people to come in for the events, and we are going to be partners in that, because we share, we share just about everything anyway. So, did you want to add anything to that?
I think, just to add to that, we're looking at anything, any of the high school events. They draw anywhere from 600 to 1,000 people, so the investment in the recreation infrastructure in southwest of Nova Scotia, this will be a great addition, and it's just another, another initiative on the three municipal units to come together. This came together, your worship, within, I think, two meetings?
It did.
And I think the municipal councils in Aragile were quite surprised at the, at the way the town and the municipality came together and decided that this was a project not only great for the Paribas area, but also great for, for the county in general. So I think it's gonna be a great project, and hopefully we get one of those big athletic events, or the Acadian Games again. It'll, it'll pay for itself in one, one event.
Good. Did we vote on this one? Okay, the second one is that the Town of Yarmouth contribute to the Municipality of Aragile Track and Field Project 33 and 1/3% of municipal share based on a $1.2 million project. Moved? Seconded? Any discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Yep. Okay. Okay. So we're going to ask if everybody is okay with, with adding the wording to refer to budget? Is the proper thing to do? I think it would've gone there anyway. Okay, Linda? So, good to go? Joint Council, RFD Canada 150 Mosaic. So we have this. Did you need that? Okay, Counselor McIsaac, go ahead.
Okay, this is from Natalie, right?
Yes.
By reading the, reading the right one there. Instead of voting on this tonight, can we move this to the Committee of the Whole so we can get more information on it? I mean, I just looked at this, and it sounds good, it looks good, and I think we need a little bit more time to get some more information on that. Maybe the CAO can find us more information on this than what's here, if he could. So I would move that, we move it to the Committee of the Whole for further study.
Moved and seconded. Just looking for dates, but I don't think, I think you've got, no, the next one has a date. Go ahead.
Sorry, Deputy. Counselor, Deputy Mayor has it.
Yeah. Go ahead, Deputy.
The recommendation at the end of her present report is to direct staff to submit a letter of interest to the Canada 150 Mosaic project, and to direct staff to submit grant applications to offset the cost, the project cost, to our region. And so I just wondered, I don't want to be too late, and this with respect with Danny. I don't want to be too late. Okay, I understand what you just said, but I just want to make sure, is there a difference of doing it tonight, or, because after Committee of the Whole, we have to come back to Counsel and make a motion to approve it.
So how about this? If, we'll talk to Natalie. Two weeks won't make the difference. I know that, because this is just coming out, I think. So, yeah, yeah, and it is first come, first served. I think that's the concern. But we will just ask Natalie, and after the Committee of the Whole, we can certainly do a quick council meeting and get it okayed then, so that we're not waiting a month.
It'd be good to have Natalie here for an overview anyways.
Definitely. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just gonna add to that. Rather than, I can understand the Deputy Mayor's concerns, but rather than to say yes, if we say yes, do it tonight, then we're not, we're not doing our diligence. And so I would like to get more information and add on this. It's, it's, it looks like a real good project, but there needs to be more information before I vote yes on it, okay?
Certainly. Okay, so it was moved and seconded to move it to the Committee of the Whole? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, RFD, the BREE Conference. This looks really good, I have to say. So, so the recommendation. Go ahead.
Your worship, I'll make a motion that the Town of Yarmouth send a letter of support to Yarmouth and Acadian Shores and Tourism Yasta Organization to proceed with application proposal for the 2017 North American Business Retention and Expansion International BREE Annual Conference to be held in the Town of Yarmouth in June 2017.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. The, the memorial bursary for Ken Langel. Do you want to go ahead with...
Thank you, your worship. I'll make this a notice of motion that the Town of Yarmouth rename its annual bursary to the Yarmouth High School, the Town of Yarmouth Ken Langel Memorial Bursary.
Moved and seconded?
I don't think we need...
Oh, we don't need it?
We don't need that.
Because we're just...
Notice of motion.
Notice of motion. We're good to go. Okay, committee appointments. I gotta get them in front of me. Okay, so Counselor Mooney sent in just a list of those that had to be filled. So this is, we'll go one by one.
Want me to do it?
Yep, we'll, we'll let you read them, but we'll go one by one, but here's what we need to do. If anybody, we need to ask each person if you're okay with accepting that position, and go from there.
The first one's yes. I move the Council Phil Mooney be named to the Audit Committee.
Okay. So here's another question. Go ahead, what were you going to ask? Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Counselor Phil Mooney is already on the Audit Committee.
The Audit Committee's Committee of the Whole, isn't it?
I think there's, no.
Oh, the other one?
The other Audit Committee.
No, I'm not.
Yeah. Well, you were there with us that day.
No, I'm not on it, though.
Okay.
Not according to the town website, I'm not on it.
Okay. You're going to be on it twice.
I'm on it twice.
You better be double sharp.
Yeah, that's going to be something.
Okay, so here, in between each one as well, if anybody else is interested, you need to speak up, okay? Because these will just go through unless... What's your question? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship. Would this not be best gone through with all of us just as all committees were put together in the first place originally? We all sat around a table and we all questioned...
But we still had to come to council.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. All right, well, you've answered my question.
For six months, for like five or six months. Are we all, are we okay, though? All right, okay, go ahead then. So, okay, so Phil Mooney be named to the Audit Committee, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary?
Your worship, I move that Counsel Phil Mooney be appointed Chair of the Yarmouth Heritage Committee with the addition of Deputy Mayor Jim McLeod.
Okay, deputy, are you good with that? Okay. Anybody else interested? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship says here, make a motion that the Mayor of the Town of Yarmouth, Pam Mu, be appointed the Chair of Water Utility. From what I understand, I'll change that motion. Your worship, to make Deputy Mayor McLeod Chair of the Water Utility.
Good to go? Thank you, deputy.
Who said there's no railroad in the Town of Yarmouth?
Okay, is anybody else interested? Okay, put your light on and comment. Go ahead.
Your worship, you're a busy girl in and around the whole country of Canada, so I'm glad to help you out a little bit.
Thank you, deputy. Okay. So moved and seconded?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that Counsel Sandy Dennis be named Chair of the Communities in Bloom Committee, and because of the significant number of community members on this committee, no additional council member being named at this time.
Okay, Counselor Dennis, do you accept? Okay. Does anybody else want to sit? She accepts, she said yes. Okay, does anybody else want to sit on it, even though the motion says? Okay? Good?
Yep.
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 It's just the Chair needs to be filled, okay? Any more discussion?
Questions.
Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that the Harborside Lodge and the Meadows Committee have no additional council members being named because of the restructuring of the board and the new governance policies being implemented. And if somebody seconds that, I can talk to that. They're coming up with new governance and a new way to select the board, your worship. So there might only be one or two more meetings between the next municipal elections. So they're going more with the asset management-based board than they are picking councillors because way back in the seventies, when the boards were set up, municipal governments did contribute to those entities. And because of that, they're going to a different model, so we don't have to appoint anybody.
Good. Okay. Moved and seconded?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that no additional council member be named to the Yarmouth Argyle Home Support because of the same aforementioned governance policy. So they're doing the same thing at Yarmouth Argyle Home Support as they're doing at the Meadows and Harborside Lodge.
Good. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that Counsel Daniel McCausick be named to the Salted Waste Park Committee.
You accept, counselor? Okay. Anybody else want on that? Good, moved and seconded?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that Counsel Madeline Dawes be named Chair of the Yarmouth Police Advisory Committee, and that Counsel Phil Mooney be added as an additional member.
Counselor Dawes, do you accept?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Phil?
Would anyone else?
Anyone else interested? Yeah.
Anyone else who would like to serve on the Police Advisory Committee for the remainder of the term?
Anybody besides Counsel Mooney?
You want to?
I think I'm the only one that has to, unless...
Yeah, no, just either you or someone else.
Yes.
So if someone else wanted to, you were out. Okay, so it's Counselor Dawes's chair and with the addition of Counselor Mooney? Any further discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that Counsel Phil Mooney be named to the Western Counties Regional Library Board.
Okay, moved and seconded, does anybody else, is anyone else interested in that position? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, this last one, I think there must have been a miscommunication between me and Linda because I don't think we have a South Ohio Compost Facility Community Liaison Committee, do we?
Well, I asked her what that was. It says on the website, it says "community liaison", and I'm like, it just doesn't make sense. So, yeah, go ahead, CAO.
Okay, so, a number of years ago, we had some issues with odors coming from the plant. And at the time, there was an order made by the Department of Environment that we established this liaison committee. And there was no end date. And so we continued to appoint. The municipality is supposed to also appoint, which they haven't advised me in the last five years that they've appointed anybody. So we sit waiting and ready to engage should they wish to meet.
And I think that's, yeah, I'll make a motion that Counsel Daniel McCausick be appointed to the South Ohio Compost Facility Community Liaison Committee. They look really good, election time.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Good job. Welcome to your new committees for six months.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
What about the Transit Committee?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Okay.
I wondered.
CAO?
So we've sort of transitioned from a startup mode to an operational mode now. And so we're going to meet in a couple of months to check in on how we're doing. I don't think it's necessary, at the startup, we were meeting every two weeks to check in and see how we were doing. So I think it's time to let the service run, and we can deal with operational issues. And when it comes to things like reviewing policy around the transit thing, I think in a couple of months, we sit down and review that. And so one meeting, and probably the two counselors who are already there, unless somebody's particularly interested, can work with staff and put together any policy changes that would come back to council for approval.
Good. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, I am very interested in that, even if it is just for the next little while. I had expressed my interest in sitting, being part of the Transit Steering Committee right from the beginning. But I was advised that members had already been chosen and that because every committee meeting is open, that I was more than welcome to come in and sit in on it. So, yes, I am very interested.
I'll make a motion that Counselor Dawes be appointed to the Transit Committee. Seconder?
Second. Moved and seconded?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay. Good. So, next one's the Tri-County Women's Center. And this is, whereas the Sheila Leahy Clinic at the Tri-County Women's Center is facing a fiscal shortfall, and whereas this clinic is becoming an integral part of the healthcare system, and this is Counselor Mooney's motion, I hereby move that the Town of Yarmouth support the Tri-County Women's Center in its financial request to the Province of Nova Scotia, Department of Health and Wellness, and that copies be sent to the Honorable Zach Churchill, Honorable Chris Donchamont, and Bernadette McDonald, Executive Director.
And I think maybe, also, your worship, maybe Honorable Leo Glavine. And I know if somebody seconds that motion, oh, I move that. If somebody seconds it, oh...
Seconded by Counsel Dawes.
And I know yourself and the two wardens, Mr. Donchamont and Mr. Goodwin, had a conversation with the Minister of Health in town early this week, and I think that was on the part of the agenda. But this just might be a little extra priding or a little reminder to Mr. Glavine the importance of the Dr. Leahy Clinic on Cumberland Street and the work that the Tri-County Women's Center does.
Good, so in there, Linda, it's just a letter, right? Just, you're asking for a letter, we didn't say that. That's a letter. Okay. Any more discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Carried. Hospital parking, go ahead, Counselor Mooney.
Thank you, your worship. As everybody knows or has learned with the provincial news that the parking fees in Queen Elizabeth Hospital in Prince Edward Island have been dropped, I hereby make the motion, where's parking fees at Nova Scotia hospitals are deterring visiting of loved ones? And whereas these same fees are also costing patients undue financial burdens, or whereas the Queen Elizabeth Hospital in the province of Prince Edward Island has dropped its parking fees due to similar concerns, I move the Southwest Regional Health Authority and Department of Health and Wellness reevaluate their parking fee structure, either to reduce or eliminate parking fees.
Okay, can I just, we can't dictate to them, so we're going to send a letter?
That's right.
To support what you're saying?
Yes. Just ask them to reevaluate their parking fee structure.
Yeah, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, that's right, it's not Southwest Health, Linda. So the Provincial Health Authority, just a couple changes and then we'll have it, right? Okay. Counselor McCausick, and then...
Just a quick note on that. I would like to see in the letter that you write, whoever writes it, that perhaps they even ought to look at after-hours free parking, like after five o'clock, where a lot of people go visit their loved ones or, you know, maybe serve them supper or whatever. Even that would help, so that might be, might want to add that to the list. I would strongly urge, whoever writing the letter, perhaps to look at that also, if the mover would accept that.
Linda, you want to put that in? Okay. Good, Counselor Dennis? Whoops.
Yes, I was thinking too, when you go up to the hospital, some people have to keep going back up like three or four times a day. And it gets quite costly when they have to do that, because sometimes their loved ones are there, and so I think...
See, if you use a transit pass, three bucks a day.
Well, what if they live out of town?
Oh, I know, yeah, you're right.
So, anyway, maybe even if they could have a pass, once you pay once, maybe you could get in the rest of the day for free or something.
Okay, so Linda, we'll add daily parking pass. Is everybody good with daily parking pass as an option as well? Just to give them a couple options, it's not up to us, but just to give them a couple. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship, and I'm sure that Counselor Mooney can answer my question. Would this also, are we also addressing lowering the cost of the monthly or the weekly passes that are offered to patients or families and friends of patients? That need to keep returning?
That's right, so...
On a daily basis? Thank you.
I think that is one of the things, if they're going to, like Counselor McCausick said, there's several options that they can do. One of them is, like you said, if you're going to go visit a loved one after five o'clock, maybe no parking fees. And it's, or drop the fees to enough where they have enough to do improvements and to do all the plowing and salting of the parking lots, because it is an expense, right? So if it goes from, it's quite a jump when you go from, you know, two dollars to three dollars to four dollars. If you do it percentage-wise, it's a big expense. But I'd just like them guys in Halifax to reevaluate just the parking fee structure. I know that decision isn't made locally anymore. That's a Halifax decision, so there's going to be some budget implications. But let's reevaluate it, just tell them that we know it's still on the radar, still a concern to the citizens of the Town of Yarmouth and the municipality, and just let them have an extra look at it.
Deputy?
I think Counsel Phil just sort of summarized it nicely, which is what I was going to do, to, just simply to reevaluate the parking fee structure, which I know will include all the different items that two or three of us have brought up around the table. So rather than make it such a long-winded letter, that can be, you know, I'm sure they'll get to Phil's motion to reevaluate the parking fee structure is, to me, is sufficient.
Good. Okay. Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Chronicle Herald? Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, your worship, I'd like to make a motion, where's the Chronicle Herald is the only truly independent provincial paper in Canada, and whereas the quality of the province-wide journalism has been compromised because of the Labor Law Code, I hereby move that the Town of Yarmouth suspend or endure cancel its subscription to the Chronicle Herald until these labor issues have been resolved.
Moved and seconded? Any discussion? Deputy?
I'm going to vote against that motion. I, gee. I get my paper online, and I love reading it. So, and I know, to me, it's a shame. I understand what Counsel Phil is saying, but I don't think we should cancel our subscription because of the labor. That's, I don't want to get involved in that, basically.
I don't want to get involved in it either, so I try not to respond to the requests, I'll say that. Trying to be diplomatic, but it's a hard line to cross, and so I try not to go there.
Okay?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Ooh, three to three. I guess it's, we're keeping the paper. We're keeping the paper. Certainly can.
Thank you, your worship. It's not that I am voting against what Counselor Mooney is bringing forward. It's just the fact that I wouldn't be surprised if by the time we send them a letter and say, here, so there, we're canceling because they may have changed their, they may have changed their policies, and they may have cleaned things up. Give them the benefit of the doubt. Thank you.
Okay, good, so we're keeping our paper anyway. So we're good. Okay. Crosswalks on Parade Street, Counselor Dennis?
Recommend that staff contact the traffic authority about adding a crosswalk on Parade Street joining Clements Avenue and the Maude Lewis Trail.
Moved and seconded? Did you want to speak to it, are you good?
Nope.
Good. Okay, question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Your light's still on?
Yes, I have another one.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to find it. I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to find it, it was on...
Yeah, it was on the extra paper, because...
Oh, okay, we're not there yet.
Somebody forgot to put it on.
No, we didn't, it's still there, it's just we're not there yet, okay?
Uh, yeah.
Council Advisory Committees?
Oh.
Deputy? Go ahead.
I move that funding for a second bus and additional shelters be referred to the capital budget discussion to explore the initiative under the new federal transportation infrastructure renewal grants, with the idea of using parts of it for expansions for our transit system in our Towne of Yarmouth.
Moved and seconded, you good? Okay, I hear too, that's why. Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to prepare and present, at a later date to be announced, a business case report on Yarmouth's small cruise ship opportunity.
I have a, I have a question. Should this be staff, or should this be YASTA? Okay, okay, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna vote against it, but maybe another motion to direct it to YASTA?
Can I?
Or amend the motion?
Can I just amend the motion that, that staff be directed to present to YASTA? Or, what's the proper wording there? Yeah, request YASTA.
That YASTA be directed.
Okay.
Go ahead. Yes. That a request be sent to YASTA.
Second.
Yep, I'm fine, Jeff.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to prepare a, a report for presentation at our May 26 Committee of the Hold Meeting on the Development of a Town Age Friendly, Town Age Friendly Strategy and Plan.
Moved and seconded, you got enough time? Okay, moved and seconded, any more discussion?
Question.
It's, it's budget time, so that's why I'm very wary of staff's time, that's all.
Jeff, do you want me to change?
Good, okay, moved and seconded, any, any more discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried.
Number four, I move that council approve a public participation program for a Towne of Yarmouth Dog Park, proposed as follows, and there are four items here. Number one, a letter advising residents in the Jarvis Street, Argyle Street, and Southeast Street area, an online survey for both the general public and for the residents of Jarvis Street, Argyle Street, and Southeast Street, three, two, it's two public hearing, two public meetings, one on the gen, one for the general public, and one for the residents of the Jarvis Street, Argyle Street, and Southeast area, and four, to develop a town newsletter that the public who are interested in the Dog, Dog Park can subscribe to receive regular updates on the development and volunteer opportunities.
And the newsletter will be online, I assume? It won't be, okay, good. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried.
I move that the amended tax sale policy be approved.
Moved and seconded, that was scary for a second. Moved and seconded, questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to meet with the Yarmouth and Area Chamber of Commerce to look into having local collections to assist with the cost of fireworks.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried.
I move that the matter of kindness meters be referred to the Yarmouth Community Fund Committee for consideration.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried.
I move that the, I move that letter from the Towne of Victoria regarding an FCM resolution, read the Federal Bill of Environmental Rights be tabled, and that the staff be directed to gather additional information on this matter.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried.
I move that correspondence be sent to the municipality of Yarmouth advising when the results are provided to us from Englobe, and the recommendation is to expand the testing area, this will be done.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Councilor Mooney?
The recommendation to expand the...
So they wanted us to expand the area? Okay. Go ahead, CAO.
Sorry, I think if you add the word "if" between "and" and "the", so "and if" the recommendation is to expand the testing area, this will be done.
That's right.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff, I was, I fumbled over that one.
That's an important word.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, because that's, that was our intentions.
So moved and seconded, any more discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, deputy?
I move that the correspondence from the Wedgeport Tuna Tournament be received and placed on file, and a letter be sent advising them, a decision has been made on grant to their organization.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye, contrary?
Nay.
Motion carried. Go ahead, deputy?
I move that the Towne of Yarmouth support and sign the proclamation as presented by the 110th Army Cadets.
Set.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question.
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary?
The last one, I move that municipalities of Argyle and Yarmouth be requested to share in the fireworks costs for the year 2016.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
Question.
All those in favor, after, when I, when we go in camera, yeah? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Thank you. Citizen Advisory Committees, reports, questions, any questions for committee chairs? Good. Additions, okay, so we did, oh, wait a minute, I got two lights on. Are these lights on for any reason? Okay, and the deputy? No, that's okay. Oh, no, that's good, okay. So we did 13A, we're on 13B, request for permission, fly over by the snowbirds. Okay, they're looking for permission, moved and seconded, go ahead, deputy?
I just have a question, do we need to give them permission?
Yes.
Well, I understand that, but why do we need to give them permission? I want, I'm just curious.
It's, it's the, yeah, go ahead. CAO?
I'm not absolutely certain on, on the protocol, but it has to do with flying over the airspace over the town at that certain, certain altitude, so, again, I don't know... Yeah, I can't cite the, the regulation, but that's customary that they do that.
Good, okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried. Communities in Bloom National Symposium and Awards, 2018. CAO?
Your worship, we, we were contacted by Communities in Bloom around the National Symposium that we had, we had previously indicated our support to, to host here, and they were looking for a letter confirming our interest, and just out of an abundance of caution before sending that letter, I thought I would bring it back to the table, knowing that the, the Chair of Communities in Bloom for the last seven years has passed, and I know there's a lot of very interested and engaged citizens on that committee, want to make sure that they're, they're good to go to, to take that project on still, just to confirm their commitment, and...
I'll make a motion. Oh, sorry, Councilor McCausick? Oh, all right, Councilor Mooney?
I'll move that we send the request to the Communities in Bloom Committee for their consideration, and bring back a recommendation to council. Yes, and we'll call, maybe the Chair can call a meeting, or we'll get Linda to call a meeting in the next week, and I know it's something that was very near and dear to our departed friend, and something that he worked hard on, and when I was in Ottawa at the Sustainability Conference, I had a opportunity to talk to Mr. Carrier, I think on three different occasions, one for about an hour, one for about 45 minutes, and the other day for about an hour, about the Communities in Bloom, and the Symposium, and what it would mean to a community the size of the Towne of Yarmouth, and when it's been held in centers, the smallest one was Charlottetown, when you go to Ottawa, Edmonton, British Columbia, I think it was Victoria, it shows you the magnitude of the, magnitude of the event, and what it would mean for a community like us, and it would take a good two to three years to plan an event like this, and I know they have a lot of liaison support in the national office, and I think we have the support in the community, and some support around the Communities in Bloom table to, to pull this one off, and this is a, can't stress enough what a major event this is.
Good, so what do you need from us? You just... Okay, so you can call a meeting, it's, okay? So the motion is to refer to Communities in Bloom?
That's a motion to make?
Yes. He made it.
Seconded?
Nope. Moved and seconded, Councilor McCausick?
Yeah, I, this was very dear to Councilor Langel's heart. He, he worked tirelessly and very hard, along with Councilor Mooney, Councilor Dennis. I think on that board, you have a lot of very, very talented people, along with, along with the, the both councilors, they, they know what's, what's the hard work that's ahead of them, but you have an exceptional, exceptional board there with a lot of good help, and they will work diligently and hard, the two Davids, and I think that for us not to keep going forward with this would be a mistake for, for the Communities in Bloom, but, and also for the people of the Towne of Yarmouth. I, I always had the pleasure of being a guest in PEI, and I've been to a couple of them before, but I must say that PEI put on a real big show, and it was great, and it was really enjoyable. So anyway, I'm, I'm with Councilor Mooney, and I think that this committee can pull this off, and along with the support of the Towne Council, the Mayor and the Council, I think we can do this.
Good, okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Question.
Aye, questions been called, aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Mental health issue, council? Well, that's what I, Councilor Dennis?
To direct staff to contact mental health to have someone give a presentation to inform council on what is available to our youth and adults suffering from anxiety, depression, and other mental health issues. I've had people speaking to me, young adults, and parents, about not knowing how to help their children, or how the adults to get help. So it'd be nice if we had somebody come and explain it to us here, that what is available, so that it's easier for us to take back to the people.
So there was a whole...
There was something today, but I couldn't go to it, and I wanted to.
It was a day long that anybody, anybody in the community could have attended at the, at the hospital on, on this issue.
Yeah.
So, yeah, okay, good.
Thank you, your worship. Wouldn't it be better served if we had that information put on the Towne's website instead of coming and giving us a presentation? I mean, I've heard these presentations before, working provincially federally through the, through their systems. They're only gonna, they're gonna talk just to their councilors, I don't know how good that will be, if they could perhaps give us some information, and we could put it on our website. Perhaps what they should be doing is giving these talks in schools and wherever need be, if it's for the youth, or for wherever, seniors homes, and what, what have you, right? That's just my take on it, I mean, I, I, I've heard the talk, I've heard the presentations. It, it's all great, but it's, it's not, I shouldn't say old news to me, but I, but I've heard it, so I think in all fairness for, for the people out there, that a lot of them are not, are not going to be here to listen to the presentation, but if you put it on the website, the information, I think that would be more productive than sitting here for 10 to 15 minutes and giving it to the, you know, to the choir that we already pretty much heard it all before, but I, I'm not against it, but that's just my thought on it.
Councilor Dennis?
Yes, thanks, counselor. Yes, you've heard it over and over maybe, but some of us councilors have never heard it, so, and some of us councilors are actually getting, the public asking us questions, so it would be nice for us to know, and I would like it at, at the council meeting, because we're actually live, so people can hear the presentation.
Okay, did anybody second it? Okay, no second, no seconders, so it doesn't go forward. Okay, where are we? Approval of invoices.
So moved.
That's about two seconds longer than it usually takes. Okay, moved. Can I have a seconder? Seconded, all in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried. Date of next meeting is May the 12th. We're going in camera, but we're going to take a couple minutes, Danny has to do something there, and I'll talk to Kevin, and we'll be, we'll meet in camera. Thanks, everyone.